Good evening. It is 6:30 PM, Monday, March 21st, 2020. This is a Carney Board of Alderman meeting. We call the meeting order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shirley, have you had a chance to take role this evening?
I have taken role. Everybody is present. You have a call.
We'll move on to the consent agenda. Board, do you have any items of discussion or questions on the consent agenda this evening? See none. If we could entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Consent agenda passes. We'll move on to Mayor's report. First item I want to discuss under Mayor's report this evening is recognition of state wrestling champions Eli Ashcroft and Ryder Shelton, both of them who are here this evening with their parents and our head wrestling coach, Coach Jake Hill. We congratulate senior Eli Ashcroft and freshman Ryder Shelton for each winning the state wrestling championship in their respective weight class. Also, congratulations to Coach Jake Hill on another outstanding season. While asked to introduce our student athletes. Enclosed is a resolution. I'd ask the board to approve recognizing their special achievements. Eric, if you could read the resolution and then we'll...
Do you want to have Jake come up and talk first?
Yeah, we'll do that after the resolution.
Okay. Go ahead then.
Go ahead.
Resolution congratulating Carney High School wrestlers, freshman Ryder Shelton and senior Eli Ashcroft, state champions at the Missouri Class III State Wrestling Tournament. Whereas Ryder Shelton and Eli Ashcroft, Carney High School wrestlers completed its 2021-22 season as district and state champions in the Class III Missouri Wrestling Tournaments. And whereas such an achievement requires complete mental and physical dedication, year-round time devoted to nutrition, conditioning, and training, along with outstanding wrestling ability by these wrestlers. And whereas freshman 106-pound Ryder Shelton had an overall record of 39 and 3, placed fifth in the Kansas City Stampede Tournament, first at the Winnetonka Tournament, was first-team All-Conference, 2022 District Champion, and kept his freshman season by being crowned state champion at the Class III State Wrestling Tournament. And whereas senior 145-pound Eli Ashcroft finished his senior season with a 37 and 3 record, finished with 158 wins in his Carney High School career, was a four-time first-team All-Conference, four-time Academic All-State, four-time District Champion, and was named Class III District Four Wrestler of the Year and kept his Carney High School career by being crowned a four-time state champion. At the conclusion of the season, Eli was named the All-Class 2022 NWC-A-NWA Male Wrestler of the Year. And whereas becoming champions in the Missouri State Tournament increases school spirit and community mightiness. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and Board of Aldermen, the city of Carney does hereby congratulate both Ryder Shelton and Eli Ashcroft, 2022 Carney High School Wrestling State Champions. Passed and resolved by this Board of Aldermen of the city of Carney, Missouri, this 21st day of March, 2022.
Can we entertain a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Congratulations. Coach, would you like to speak before we hand out copies of resolutions to the boys?
Yeah, first off, thanks for having us tonight. Thanks to Mayor Pogue and the Board of Aldermen for recognizing these two fantastic individuals. Freshman Ryder Shelton led the 106 weight class. I don't think he weighs that anymore. But he did a fantastic job. And that's one of the hardest things to do as a freshman is come in and ask them to maintain, you know, not just the competition, the five days a week for many of them the first time, but the off-the-mat type of thing. That's the discipline that he had to have to just make the weight class all year. Something that we gave him a little time and started at 113 pounds and then followed a weight loss plan really well. And went down to 106 pounds and dominated from there. He led the team with 39 wins. He, like I said, the Kansas City Stampede's a nationwide tournament here in Kansas City. And there's 64, it's a 64-man bracket. And he took fifth at that tournament, a national tournament. And then the Winnetonka Tournament is mostly a Class IV big school, Missouri and St. Louis. All the best teams in Kansas City and St. Louis are there. And he came away as the champion of that tournament. Helped lead the team to 7-0 in conference. And we were conference champions. He was a Class III District Four Champion and then obviously the Class IV State Champions while we're here tonight. So his work ethic and his attitude, just coming in from day one, it was, you know, for him, the impressive thing for me as a coach was he had the expectation to win state, but it wasn't obviously guaranteed. It was, he thought coming in, that was his goal and something that he went and made happen. So that was, that was cool to see. And then we're also here tonight to recognize Eli. So Eli is somebody I've had the pleasure to talk a lot about just these past month and then a few more times even this week. Eli was the state champion at 145 pounds this year. He went up two weight classes every year. So he started just like Ryder, at 106 his freshman year and then bumped up two weight classes to 120, bumped up two weight classes to 132, and then bumped up two weight classes to 145 and had the same result every year. So this year with 37 wins, as Eric mentioned, 158 career varsity wins. So that 150 is kind of the big milestone that a lot of varsity wrestlers, if they have the opportunity to wrestle varsity all four years, that's, that's the big milestone for a career. And then having the four next to all of it. So the four-time conference champ, the four-time district champ, the four-time Academic All-State. He's got a 3.9 GPA and is attending Kent State University for a D1 Athletic Scholarship next year to wrestle and represent, continue to represent Carney at the Division One level. And hopefully we'll be watching him like we watched the NCAA's this past weekend for wrestling. He'll have an opportunity in the future to compete at that. So, and then the big one, you know, the postseason was something that was fun to be a part of. So the MWA is the Missouri Wrestling Association. And all coaches in the entire state of Missouri, all classes, there's, there's four wrestling classes vote on these awards. So he, he won every award he could win. He won the Class III Wrestler of the Year. He won the District Wrestler of the Year. And then he won the overall, for all of Missouri, Male Wrestler of the Year. So congratulations to both these wrestlers and thanks for taking the time to recognize them tonight.
If I have a question. How many state champions, four timers do you know, if you do know, or have come from Missouri?
So I was told that Eli is the 33rd four-time state champion in the state of Missouri. Carney has four of those out of the 33. So Clay Singh did it just about four years ago. And we had two more before that that were around my age. And then Ryder's, Ryder's Eye in the next one. So we got an opportunity, no pressure, but that's something. I saw an Instagram post that said one out of four. That's all I can assume. So yeah, so it's, it's a, it's a big accomplishment. So absolutely.
Thank you.
Ryder, congratulations, sir. Look forward to watching you wrestle next three years ago. Eli, congratulations, sir. May you... And wish you both the best of luck. Stay in there and continue success.
Thanks, parents as well.
Yes. Always appreciate the time to show some appreciation to our school district and support our, the kids of the community, our future. So thank you for being here. Next item of discussion under Mayor's remarks. And I believe we have the citizen that requested opportunity to speak about this. As I continue to receive requests for backyard chickens in the community after neighboring communities like Smithville and Liberty have passed ordinances and approval of this topic. Enclosed are those procedures that pretty much mirror each other that both Liberty and Smithville have passed for the board's review. Besides giving the most recent contact, I did get contacted again today by another resident requesting chickens. I'd like the board to give some direction regarding a possible proposed ordinance so I can respond to these requests to the public. I believe we have a Ms. Watkins on Zoom tonight who would like to share some comments with the board. I'll be happy to give her the floor in a couple minutes to, to share her request with the board.
Ms. Watkins, if you could please unmute.
She said she is unable to talk, but she did share her thoughts via email. Her email was included in the board packet. Does anybody from the board have anything to say regarding her request?
Well, we talked earlier about kind of working with the new animal control officer on this. So I kind of like to hear, I mean, I'm not 100% yay or 100% nay, but I'd like to hear about our animal control officer to try to see, we know what the rules are, but what's the physical aspect of enforcing what our restrictions would be. And, and so I, I just kind of thought that this was, would be something that we would bring back up when we hire the new animal control officer that we did by passing the use tax. That was my thought.
I also thought the same thing, that this was to be addressed once we had worked on that, the animal control officer.
I will say I've worked in two municipalities that allow chickens. Both of those municipalities, as well as Liberty and Smithville, have very strict restrictions on roosters. And, and that's the key. And in both the municipalities that I've worked for that have allowed chickens, you know, the hens are typically quiet. Roosters are typically loud. And so as far as the enforcement side of it, it's, it's pretty easy to, to find the loud ones. And so both municipalities that I've worked for that allowed chickens, neither one of them had animal control officers. The enforcement side of it came out of the Code Compliance Division. And so, you know, whether we like it or not, we already have chickens in town. And they can, they can drive down several of the streets in, in town and, and there's going to be chickens in the backyard. We just, they're not permitted by permit. And we all have regulations on, on the coops. And, and so right now, the people that have chickens can have any kind of coop and run that they want. So I kind of like the restrictions of both Liberty. They are very, very similar. You know, one allows 10, the other allows six. I would, I would think we'd err on the side of the smaller amount. Excuse me. But there's, there's some good things in both of the regulations that were in our packets. So I was a little surprised at Smithville's 50-yard separation from any neighboring residents. It's sometimes kind of hard to do. So, but my experience, chickens, hens have not been a real issue. So.
Do we have an anticipated day for, or timeframe for the animal control officer?
That was going to be my question to the administrator if we have an update on. Obviously that was part of the use tax initiative of our level, our first level of funding identified. The piece of that was to hire our first full-time, to hire and equip our first full-time animal control position. Obviously that isn't going to affect until the first week of April and we won't be receiving those funds until June. Or do you know if the police department's made any leeway on hiring that position?
We have, Mr. Mayor. And I think we've got, I think we've got those officers either identified or one of them is close to accepting or understanding.
We're talking about the animal control piece, not the police officer piece.
The animal control officer. That's been prioritized downwards simply because we have zero funding for it right now. And we wanted to, we're trying to move the pickleball court into a fast-paced item. So we were thinking probably no sooner than October we'd even begin to start talking about filling the job. So we'd have some months of time to know where our revenues really are.
Well, I would say that I'm in agreement with David on these. I think both of these are pretty good. I, I think 50 feet is probably a little excessive. I think, I like the 6, 6'10", no roosters, 10 feet from all property lines. I think all of those are good permits. And I think that I, I understand when we talked about waiting for the animal control officer, but it might not be necessary for that if we wanted to move forward a bit.
Yeah, we continue to get requests from residents. The one thing I will, would like to remind everybody is even if we would in the future consider an ordinance approving this and changing our current ordinance, it doesn't trump any HOA restrictions. And a lot of the HOAs in our community will not allow chickens. So just, I want to make sure that everybody's aware of that and is reminded of that as well. So any other items of discussion on this topic from the board? I appreciate the board, once again, hearing our residents' request. And...
Mayor, if I could add something. I, I think if we do go any further with this, you know, the big difference between Smithville and Liberty is one has a fee and the other does not. One has a fee.
A fee.
And the other does not.
Smithville requires a fee.
A $30 fee. And I would, I would suggest that if we do proceed with this, that we attach a fee to it to help offset some of the cost maybe of that animal control officer. So, and both municipalities that I've worked for that have allowed chickens, they are permitted use and they do have a permit fee associated with them. So.
Okay, that concludes Mayor's remarks. We will move on to Administrator's report.
Mr. Mayor, enclosed in 4A is a memo from Donnie Smith recommending Decker Construction be retained to complete repairs on Raymond Hall Bridge on North Grove Street. As identified in a recent MODOT Bridge Inspection Report, Tom Decker secured engineering recommendations from Burns &amp; McDonald and that email is enclosed in the agenda packet. Decker is Clay County's go-to bridge maintenance contractor and we believe would spend more on engineering than the cost of these repairs at $28,642. And therefore, we jointly recommend that we retain Decker to make those repairs. And Donnie, if you have any other comments about that? You met with Tom out on the job site to show that to you.
Yeah, he actually saw some design flaws and he kind of showed them in the pictures. There's seams in the jersey barriers or the concrete barriers along there. And the seams in the low spots in the bridge are right above the bridge supports. And as a result of that, the salt and water runs down the bridge support and down to the H-iron is into the ground and causing the rusting. So he's showing on there that he's drilling some decked drain holes away from the areas to drain the salt and water away from the support of the bridge and rectify the problem. He says the bridge is in really good shape. He didn't see a big problem with it other than the rusting from the salt on the H-beams. So he thinks if we can repair that, we'll get a good long time just to live the bridge. And he also said that if we get a critical report from MODOT that they will close the bridge down and we'll have to replace it or repair it big time then, and they'll look a lot harder at us. I would rather repair and maintain than replace.
Any questions from the board on our request? Actually, just a simple resolution. Motion to approve the repair for $28,642.
Just the proposal itself is...
I make a motion to approve the bridge repair for $28,642.
I'll send that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. And that concludes my report.
I will move on to Pellics' requests and petitions.
Mr. Mayor, enclosed is, is an application from Star Development proposing to construct a 2,222, 25-square-foot building with a drive-through for Starbucks Coffee Shop on Lot 4B of the shops at Carney. We actually have Tim Harrison there in our council room tonight. Appreciate that. At their March the 14th meeting, the Minutes are enclosed, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the proposed commercial site plan, subject to staff comments. And after briefing from David Pavlich and Board Liaison Kathy Barker, it's recommended the board consider approval of a commercial site plan by motion.
Thank you. Any, any comments from staff?
Not really. The site plan, it was approved unanimously. It's a pretty good layout on the lot that is out next to Dairy Queen. Engineers reviewed their several plans and has approved the plans too. So we'll probably be in a position where with approval, we could issue building permits very soon for construction.
Anything additional from our Planning and Zoning Liaison?
No, evidence and minutes were good. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions from the, the board regarding this?
Was there any discussion over traffic?
No, we talked about...
Because you're kind of sharing that one part with Dairy Queen.
We did talk about the traffic flow. That, I think that was how it was originally designed, was for those two lads to do that. Obviously, when the new interchange goes in, that'll alleviate some of the bottleneck there. But not, none of it, and that they weren't concerned about the traffic flow.
Any other questions from the board? Actually entertain a, a motion to approve the Starbucks Commercial Site Plan of 521 West 92 Highway.
No.
No.
Oh, it's public request.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Tim.
We'll move on to the next item of business.
Mr. Mayor, enclosed is an application from Elizabeth Scarpino, the new owner of 106 West Washington Street, which is formerly the James Henry Salon, for a 1,690-square-foot building expansion and facade improvements. At their March the 14th meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the proposed commercial site plan, subject to staff comments. And after briefing from David Pavlich and Board Liaison Kathy Barker, it would be recommended that the board consider approval of the commercial site plan by motion.
Any comments from staff?
Just a few things to point out again. This was approved unanimously by the Planning and Zoning Commission. We do have a sanitary sewer line that runs east and west along the back of the property in the drive aisle that they have granted a utility easement to the city for that. We couldn't identify if there was an easement for the line. Also, there is, it's hard to see unless you really know the property. There's a little pole sign on the corner of the building on Washington Street that will be removed as part of, of this project. I did have a Planning and Zoning Commission member ask me if the enrichment council or the downtown organization had any comments. I forwarded the application to Kurt, who said he has had several discussions with Elizabeth about it and thinks it will be an asset in the downtown area.
Yeah, he shared the same with me and mentioned that she's heard her business have participated in many of the downtown events and appreciate that.
Yeah, one of, one of the staff concerns was it seems like a pretty large building expansion on a fairly small site. And a lot of the properties, there are four different properties that share drive aisles in and around that property. Want to make, make sure that there's an area maintained along the back that vehicles can get through to 33 and to Washington Street.
Anything from our Planning and Zoning Liaison?
No, that last, that last item was our biggest concern was to make sure that there were still some drive, drive aisle alley through there. And that seemed good. And I guess the other thing was the parking and because of where they are, the parking is allowed on the streets. So they're not required to have a certain number of parking spaces.
It's part of our CBD Downtown Zoning District that goes well basically from Grove Street along Washington Street to Beer Creek. And that zoning does not require off-street parking because we have parking provided along Washington Street.
Yeah, type of business, there's customers coming and going. They're probably, you know, staying there for long periods of time. Any items of discussion or questions from staff?
Yeah, Dave, on the, if I remember correctly, I think that sewer line that goes back there in the back goes to the Carney muffler. You're going to be accessed to that?
We're not, we're not removing access to that. That line runs east and west, kind of the middle of the east-west alley.
Yeah, but, but it looks like the building's coming back pretty close to that sewer easement.
It will be about 20 feet from the property line. The sewer, the utility easement was, was I think a 15-foot-wide utility easement? Because we didn't know exactly where it laid on the property. So it will be, the building will be four or five feet from the easement. And then the sewer line is somewhere in there. It won't, won't remove sewer access for the muffler shop or any other building.
Okay, I didn't know if that was going to get into that. We have trouble with that piece property. Okay.
There are no other questions or items of discussion on the request. We entertain a motion to approve single-handedly Liz's Commercial Site Plan at 106 West Washington Street.
Make a motion to approve. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Liz. It's always exciting to see a local business grow and expand here in Carney. And I know every time my wife takes something and there's a long wait. So I think Carney's supporting you and we're glad you're here.
Thank you so much.
I gotta ask, what is single-handedly Liz?
Well, we have been doing alterations and we are moving to the bridal niche. So we're selling wedding gowns now, special occasion wear, alterations for all of those as well.
She was up by Mojos and trips in there, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's right. I do remember.
She can make you a custom veil for you next time.
Just let me know. Thank you, guys.
Good to see investment in the downtown.
Absolutely.
About businesses leaving, going out to the interstate and not coming back. Here we have somebody, hopefully, that's going to stay. They'll attract others and we'll maybe see some other businesses.
And improving the...
Improve a vacant building.
Yeah, improving the look of that building is going to be pretty, pretty nice.
Turn around for a long time.
I like the drawing.
We'll move on to our scheduled public hearing this evening.
Mr. Mayor, a public hearing has been scheduled to consider the annexation of 11 acres, what we call the Kretzinger Property, into the shops at Carney CID. After the public hearing, it is recommended the board consider the enclosed proposed ordinance. We have Megan Miller from Gilmore &amp; Bell, who has prepared all these intense documents and, and will be happy to explain them down to every little detail.
Yes, gladly. I'm Megan Miller, Economic Development Council of the City. Yes, what you have in front of you is a petition to add property to the shops at Carney CID. It's always because you guys form the district, we have to go through this petition process for the CID act when it comes back before you. Because this particular project that we're annexing... Because this particular project that we're annexing the property for was already contemplated by the original petition to form the Shops at Carney CID, we're just adding the property. It's roughly 11 acres, most of it being made up of the Kretzinger property, or Kretzinger property, excuse me. There's also a trail that the city owns that's also going to, to be included in that as well. So, yep, we're changing, like I said, we're changing nothing about this other than just adding that property.
Sorry, I'm trying to get there, Jim. I just didn't know the clicker would work.
It will, if you click.
And all this is, is just reiterating the original petition to make sure that.
So, yeah, it's the same track, right? There we go.
Yes, and so I, I do want to state for the record that we did file the petition for the CID Act with the city clerk. All the notices that were required for the CID Act were sent out and anybody had an opportunity to come and speak tonight, so.
The cul-de-sac is in that piece.
Yes.
It's a temporary turnaround, basically, is how it was built. Yeah, there's not, there's not a, a platted block around the cul-de-sac.
Thank you, Megan. This time, I will open the floor for public comment. If you wish to speak for or against this request, please state your name and address for record. Floor is open. Ryan, do we have anybody online that wish to speak?
It does not appear we do, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I'll close the floor for public comment or input. Any questions or discussions on this request from the board? If not, if you could read the proposed ordinance by the title, for the first reading, title only, please.
An ordinance approving the petition to add property to the Shops at Carney Community Improvement District.
Make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving the petition to add property to the Shops at Carney Community Improvement District.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Pull the board, please.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
The vote is unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Megan, for being here.
Oh, we've got one more thing.
I know, you're not getting ready yet.
That's right. We've got some old business to discuss.
Mr. Mayor, under old business, we do have the reimbursement agreement, which was taken up by the Shops at Carney CID at the beginning of this meeting, this night at 6, at 6 o'clock. And so it's been approved by the CID, now it needs to be approved by the Board of Aldermen, as I understand it. So this is a planned acquisition of 11 acres of the Kretzinger property. The reimbursement agreement's been prepared by Gilmore and Bell between the city and the Shops CID to reimburse the city for the $750,000 purchase price. And the approval of the enclosed ordinance will enable the property closing to be conducted sometime this week, we hope.
Any questions from the board? Can I actually read the proposed ordinance by title only, please?
An ordinance approving the reimbursement agreement between the City of Carney, Missouri and Shops at Carney Community Improvement District.
You can motion it through on first reading.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only.
An ordinance approving the reimbursement agreement between the City of Carney, Missouri and Shops at Carney Community Improvement District.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Pull the board.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
Vote is unanimous, Mr. Mayor. And, Mr. Mayor, I would like to thank Gilmore and Bell for simplifying this project. And it is very complicated that we had to have our bond counsel involved. So what's seen so simple as to spend money from the CID fund is, is very complicated, actually. And appreciate you guiding us through that.
No problem. It's fun.
Thanks, Megan.
See you, guys.
Next item of old business, fiscal year 2023 budget adoption.
Mr. Mayor, the proposed budget was presented at the last board meeting. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer or carry on more of a discussion. Otherwise, we have the proposed ordinance enclosed that has also the salaries set by the proposed ordinance.
Are there any specific questions or items of discussion from the board? If not, Jim, if you could read the proposed ordinance, first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance adopting the FY 2023 budget and personnel salaries for the City of Carney, Missouri.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance adopting the FY 2023 budget and personnel salaries for the City of Carney, Missouri.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Pull the board, please.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
Vote is unanimous. We used to bounce around different ways because it always felt like we were kind of in a rut. But we spensed with that when we went to our online meetings because we thought it might be confusing. So that's why I get confused.
We have no new business to discuss this evening. We'll move on to Alderman Discussion. Alderman Spencer?
It was a wonderful weekend, great weather. Our new heart is out here from the parade of hearts. It has brought a lot of people to our community. Saturday was very busy over there with lots of people stopping and taking photos. And they saw the open sign for the museum and came in there too. And so it was a win-win. Quite a few asked, where can we be at in town? Definitely bringing some tourism dollars.
It's just what we hoped it would do. And, and even just this evening dodging the rain, we've seen a young lady take some pictures with a dog out there, some other individuals. So I've heard from staff here that it's been busy nonstop too. So thank you for that report. Alderman Holt?
I just want to say how it's kind of wild. We're supposed to be in a, an economic downturn with inflation going high. And it seems like every time I drive by, Geno's and Fat Boy's is packed, which is great to see downtown parking issues down here because everything's busy. That tells me that with the gas prices and stuff, instead of people going to Liberty and eat, they're reading local. So I think in some ways, this is all going to help our local businesses, let people stay a little closer to home because, you know, got $4 a gallon of gas, you know? So I'm really glad to see that. Our, our businesses are going to benefit from that.
Thank you. Alderman Lehman?
Just to piggyback on, on Alderman Spencer's comment, my wife and I went out to Justin James Park yesterday enjoying the weather. There was actually a traffic backup at our stop sign because people were coming into town and, and there was lots of people parked in downtown and there was a waiting line to get to the heart so that they could take pictures. And, and it was, it was neat to see, but it was, it was different to see that kind of a crowd downtown just to take pictures, you know? And so it was, it was neat to see. And I'm sure a lot of them were from out of town. So it was really neat to see. My wife had never seen the, the hearts and she's like, those are big. I was like, yep, they are. So, so it's, it's neat to see, so.
Alderman Barker?
A couple of things. I know coming into town, people have probably seen the sign that's saying that 92 is going to be closed from I-35 and that was concerning to me.
I haven't seen that sign. Where's that at?
There's one on the interstate. Yeah.
Oh, really?
I, I'm, David and I have been talking about it and he's looking for more information, but we think maybe it's from the traffic circle on West. But it said, the signs say 92 will be closed from I-35. That's concerning to me because it's a two-month project. And I said, a lot of businesses may have some real struggles if they, people can't get to their thing. So David's going to give us some more information on that as he gets it.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of that either. Jeff, just curious, has the fire department been made aware of anything?
I, I only assumed that they were going to continue their 92 highway work where they stopped the flash flood.
I think, I think the closure might be, it's part of the 92 improvements, but I think it might be tied more to the semi-truck traffic and through traffic rather than local, trying to get semis that might use 92 to get east and west to use 152 and 69 to maneuver around. But I, I messaged the project engineer who we talked to last year when they were doing some of the, we had the issues with the Oakwood area. And hopefully, still the project engineer will get back with me tomorrow and we can share information from there.
Thank you, Kathy, for making sure we're on top of that.
Yeah. And then one other thing, in a couple of weeks, we have an election. And there are a lot of questions that are really important to this community. The Fire District has a question, the school board has a question, the school board has some representatives that need to be elected. Obviously, this board has a, has at least one contested race. So I just encourage everyone to educate yourselves, go and find out the information and make an informed decision on, on Election Day.
Absolutely. Right, if you entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Oppose? Everybody have a good evening. Thank you.